I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you'd take your roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, April 21st council meeting agenda as presented.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dold. Any further comments from table, from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. We have no recognitions, no state or county officials here, no presentations, community events. I do have a couple of communications. One is about our garbage. For those that have missed garbage, please continue to call DPW. We do have our Garden City Fix It, but continue to call in to DPW so we can monitor and track any missed routes or any missed pickups. DPW will keep track of that in case of future considerations down the line. I know there was some misunderstanding as far as yard waste first of April versus first full week of April, so it seems to have been rectified at this moment. Also about our street sweeping, and I'm just going to read an update or a little note. The city, we are aware of concerns regarding the quality of last week's street sweeping. Although the contractor has been in town for several days, progress has been slower than expected, and the areas that have been completed do not meet our standards. To remedy the issue at no added cost to the city, the city's street sweeping vendor will restart the sweeping process today, weather permitting. We are working closely with the contractor to ensure the job is completed properly. Thank you for your patience and cooperation as we work to keep our streets clean. And again, be patient, we are aware of some of the concerns and problems we had last week. The city is aware of it, DPW is aware of it, and we are working to rectify it one way or another. Thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, 1, 2, and 3, including 3A.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Comments from table, from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. 11B is our action items. First item is special land use for 32330 Ford Road. Mayor. Hold on a second. We'll call Mr. Ortega, our planning consultant from McKenna.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is a request to establish an adult-use marijuana Class B grower, an adult-use marijuana processor, and an adult-use marijuana retailer at 32330 Ford Road. This property is located on the east side of Hubbard Avenue and north of Ford Road. In 2018, this site received special land use approval, site plan approval, and has received their state and city licenses for a medical marijuana grower, medical marijuana processor, and medical marijuana provisioning center, all in compliance with the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act and all in compliance with our city ordinances and regulations. So the applicant has now submitted this application to operate adult-use marijuana uses as well in this exact same structure. With us tonight is Doug Stewart and Craig Aronoff of Aronoff Law, available to answer any questions you might have about specifics of the operation. So this site is zone M1 Light Industrial, and within the M1 Light District, adult-use marijuana facilities do require special land use review prior to their operation. On April 10th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this proposed use, and at that hearing, there was one written comment received that was concerned about the use of marijuana, and there was one speaker asking questions about the ability to have other marijuana uses in the city. The commission considered all the issues, including those of this particular site and including those within the special land use review criteria, but then ultimately did adopt a motion recommending that the city council grant special land use approval for these uses at this location. The Planning Commission also did discuss site plan issues and have granted site plan approval contingent upon the final council approval and upon the applicant providing a revised site plan to address some site plan issues. Some of the issues that we spoke about, the Planning Commission addressed, were the new regulations of the city ordinance for design in regards to safety and improvements to sites and facilities. Their approval is based on these new standards, and one benefit of this is that there is a potential to have additional sites to the north, most relevantly, because they are located in the industrial use, they are located in the, with enough setback from, meaning all our other requirements for specific locations, that would create similar sites of a higher design criteria, including not only the roadway improvements, but also improvements to the facilities. So ultimately, tonight, the council has several options regarding this application. The council can make a determination that no additional discussion beyond tonight is necessary. Council would agree with the recommendation from the Planning Commission and grant final approval. The council can choose to hold further discussion on this proposed use and request that it be added for additional discussion at a future meeting, or tonight, the council may make a motion to deny that project, having determined that the redevelopment does not meet the specific approval criteria that is listed in the zoning ordinance. With those options before you, I can take any questions at the appropriate time.
Okay. Well, I'll go with, we can ask questions after a motion is made. Motion is in order, and Mayor Protem Dold.
Yes. I motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendations for the adult-use marijuana Class B grower and adult-use marijuana processing and adult-use marijuana retail in the M1 Light Industrial Zone District. The application may be seeking approval to operate these use in extending buildings at 32330 Ford Road.
Support.
Councilmember Karafotis. So that is option one.
Yes.
Okay. Further comments from table or questions for Mr. Ortega?
Mayor.
From the public, Councilmember Hughes.
I was wondering, if the property, if it was sold at some point, would that, would it still remain, have the ability to be a marijuana site?
So, the site would have the, the approval that you'd be granting tonight does run with the land in regards to special land use. However, the ability to operate any facility on the site will always have to require to meet the licensing criteria of both the state and the city. The city's ordinance that was adopted, your general law ordinance, requires an annual review and approval for the license, including making sure that they have all their state licenses. And, for example, if the facility were to be sold to another operator, that operator would have to obtain their state licenses and approvals in order, as part of the transaction, and eventually make sure that there's that specific handoff from the state approval to, making sure that they provide the city with all their approved licenses before operating for that new user.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I was wondering, there is no plan for signage, and I was wondering, you know, would it, if they were to buy the property where there's parking on Ford Road, would they be able to have a sign forward onto Ford Road, or is it, right now, it's not proposed where the signage is going to be?
So, with signage, that's a separate application that gets, that's reviewed and approved administratively, provided they're in full compliance with our ordinances. The site property lines are at a setback, are not adjacent to Ford Road, so any approval would be for only signs either on the building or on the site. And that's typical of site plans, while they might have some concept for signage, they typically have to have that separate permit, and so they usually done separately. To answer more importantly, your question with regard to any signage on Ford Road, they cannot. The city ordinances for signage prohibit the advertising of property, on property that does not have that business located on that property.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Oh, two things. And that property, even though the address is on Ford Road, it's not really on Ford Road, it's a good hundred yards or a block and a half away from Ford Road.
Yeah, exactly.
And up until now, they've done everything we've asked of them, right?
That is correct.
The building's been redone, they're taking care of it, it looks beautiful, everything's good.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Is my only question?
Okay.
I have another question.
Councilmember Hughes.
I see that they have to follow a particular, the ordinance with regards to smell, odor, things like that, and I was wondering who follows up on that, follows up on that, and what can be done if there is?
So that's usually, that is a complaint-driven issue, so if there is ever a complaint received by the ordinance department, they would go out and investigate and make sure that the, if the site has any, if there's any detectable odor at the property line, then they would have to work with the applicant and give the applicant an opportunity to correct that issue. So, there's a lot that goes into the mechanical and ventilation system to make sure that there, any odor from marijuana is contained within the building. That is a requirement of our ordinances, and so if at any point in the future that is detected, it would be investigated by the ordinance enforcement and actions would be taken to make sure they mitigate the issue.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more question about that.
Councilmember Karafotis.
So, they've been growing all along, though, because they're growing medical marijuana, and we've had no complaints about that?
To my knowledge, they haven't, we haven't received any complaints, no.
But they're growing now anyway, right? They're just changing their license, so.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I will say this, I remember, I've been around long enough to remember when that was an actual little machine shop, and I've seen it back when it had wood floors, and the EPA came in, and they've spent probably well above $10 million to invest in that building. I did do a tour before they did a lot of stuff, I think some other council members did also. It's a beautiful facility. I think it's, it'll be good for the city, and I don't foresee any issues as far as security or odor or anything else. I think they've invested very heavily in it. Any further comments from table, from the public?
Just real quick, my name is Craig Aronoff, I'm the attorney that represents the building owners and operators of the facility. We just want to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to pursue adult use at this facility. As Mayor Jacobs mentioned, we spent a lot of money there, made a massive investment, we're really proud of the building and how great it looks and how great it's operating, and we really look forward to the next chapter, and thank you again.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Item two is contract award to the Radcliffe Center ADA bathroom renovation. I'll call Ms. Erica Smith, our Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We received four bids for the bathroom renovation project at Radcliffe, and in your packet, provided info on all four of those bids, along with our lowest responsible bidding standards that we apply. It is my recommendation to move ahead with all phases, ceiling and carpentry. They were the second lowest bid, but when you calculate in a city-based business preference credit, we removed a contingency that was in there just so we could do equal comparison, and we felt that passed work, and familiarity with the building was something that was really important. And so, we'd like to move ahead with all phases to complete the work. We are asking for a $10,000 contingency for anything that comes up that we're not aware of, and in this particular case, we have a deadline we're trying to make to complete the work by June 30th, so just for the sake of time.
Motion is in order. Councilmember Dold.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract with all phases, ceiling and carpentry of Garden City, Michigan, as contractor to complete the ADA bathroom renovation project in the amount of $155,000, with an additional $10,000 approved as contingency funds for the project.
Support. Was that you, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dold. Okay. Comments from the table? The only one I have is on our eight lists of responsible bidder reasons we can go with, not the lowest bidder, is experience, and especially experience in the building, and performance of previous contracts that they've had, and all phases has been exceptional with the work they've done in there and their experience in there, so I agree with going with them 100%. Any further comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Item three, Ms. Smith, is the contract award for the HVAC rehabilitation.
So, we had over 22 individuals representing 11 businesses attend our pre-bid meeting and walkthrough for this project. Six companies provided bids. I provided information on the lowest three. After reviewing the bids, calling references, discussing with our consultant, which is DeClemente Siegel Design, staff are recommending Denny's Heating and Cooling. You know, they have done, they're based out of Troy, they've done projects that are in comparison, they've done a couple of schools, they had five references, and there's really nothing that we have seen that discredits them or gives us any pause for concern. I know that there's been some discussion on some of the other vendors. You know, a couple of things I want to mention is our funding source, which is HUD, does also request lowest responsible bidder. And one of the other timelines that I just wanted to mention is that tomorrow, a new energy code goes into effect on Earth Day. The impact that this has on our projects is really only, is not in the energy efficiency of our models, all of that is going to comply with new energy code, but starting tomorrow, it will require third-party verification. So, what we had done today was put our proposed contractor on that, what's it called, permit, to get that started, and so if we were to proceed with them, we're going, we'd be able to move ahead with that without having to get the third-party verification. But I know, I think there's some questions, so I'll open it up.
Motion is in order. Mayor? Councilmember King?
I move to approve a contract with Denny's Heating and Cooling of Troy, Michigan, as contractor to complete the Radcliffe HVAC rehabilitation project for $1,403,000, with an additional $100,000 approved as contingency funds for the project.
Support? Support from Councilmember Witt.
Mayor.
Discussion from table.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
I just wanted to let you know, I did look at Denny's Heating and Cooling, and they had an A-plus rating on Better Business Bureau, even though they weren't accredited, so.
Mayor.
Nice to see.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Am I allowed to make another motion?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, there's a motion on?
Okay.
Okay. Right now, we're just having a discussion, and then if you want to make, we'll go from there.
Okay. So, discussion then?
Yes.
I feel that, knowing that one of the other bidders that's close in the same price was Quality, they have done all of our school districts, all of their buildings except for one. All of those buildings were built around the same time and have similar square footage, and they are highly recommended by our school district. And I just, with the problems that we've had in the past with our lowest bidder, I just feel a little bit more secure in the knowledge that we have a company that kind of knows our buildings already and provides a little bit more knowledge into those buildings. And I feel that if we chose them, there'd be less surprises. I do appreciate you always wanting to save money for our community, so I don't want you to think that, that we don't.
Further, further discussion from the table?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
If, if, if we were to have a motion and go with the other, the other company, which I understand, you know, what you're saying, it's important to have that recommendation from the schools, but if we were to hold off and then we fall into the new regulations, what kind of costs, do you, I mean, do you have any idea, would that add a great deal of cost, having a third party, and?
Yeah, I did speak to our consultant about that. It probably for them might be around $20,000 for them, but then the third, like for them to work with the third party, so it could be up to $50,000 or so to do that. I'm not 100% sure, because we haven't gotten proposals.
No, it's a guess at this point, right.
But it is a significant time, you know, process.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
So, the HUD grant requires us to go with the lowest responsible bidder. Is there any penalty if a switch is made and HUD doesn't believe that they're the lowest qualified bidder on the list?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure, because I haven't submitted anything for the HUD. Sometimes they will require the bid forms, and they may look at that, they may not. So, it's just a risk that we would potentially take, I don't know how much it would be if they were to come back and say, well, you know, what disqualified your low-two bidders?
I'm just looking at it, it might be a potential $1.7 million hit, you know, out of general fund if they feel that they don't award the money because of that switch. So, that's the only thing I'm looking at.
Mayor. Councilmember King.
I guess I have some of the same concerns. I mean, I know with like for the ADA bathrooms, that was a pretty small difference, I definitely felt more comfortable going with somewhere we have knowledge of the, the city, the building, and so forth. However, this one, this is about almost a quarter million difference between the bids. That's a little bit much, just, just for the comfort of knowing this contractor.
Thank you.
At one point, I'd air a quarter million dollars cheaper, and I have to wonder why. Where's the manufacturer coming from? Is it made in America? Is it a union shop? Are we using quality goods? We've got bit so many times by taking a low bidder in the city, we're dealing with it every day with the pickups and the weekly pickups, with the cleanups that we're going through quarterly now. We're looking at a building here that's had problems, issues time and time again for a couple of years. Street quality, taking the low bidders on the streets, the streets are falling apart. I think we need to stop and take a look, and then being pressured for these last-minute things again, that reminds me of the guy that just left town here and kind of put it to us royal. I would prefer to go to air quality systems once it's been proven in the, in the city. They did the high, junior high school with no problems. I have confidence, they come with strong recommendations, I've been involved with different EPW supervisors, contact with several people within this city that recommend them. I'm just afraid to take, you know, getting hit again with here, this is, and this is, what the heck? It's not coming out of the general fund.
Right.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
I was wondering if, let's say that if we make the switch to the quality air systems, and but, and we submit it to HUD, and they reject it, because we're going to have to, we're going to demonstrate that we went out for more than one bid, I would imagine, then how long, how long could that delay the process potentially?
Well, I think what I would do if you changed it tonight, I would try to get some answers from HUD, because we don't typically submit for reimbursement until we've made payment on the project.
Okay.
You know. And I did want to answer, we did request follow-up from the low-three bidders to get the list of the manufacturers of the equipment, so we do have all of that information from the three, and they're all, you know, the same equipment pieces, so just wanted to share that.
Apples to apples for the equipment.
Yeah, and you know, one thing, we do have a consultant, you know, it was $46,000 for DeClemente to prepare the specs and do all the engineering drawings, and that is really to protect us when we go out to bid. We are, we are asking for costs for these exact works, and, you know, the safety that we have in doing, you know, the best research that I can when, when we select them, and knowing that we have specs in place and we execute a bond, you know, within 10 days of an agreement, you know, those are the safety nets that need to be in place. But, you know, I certainly understand the desire to, you know, work with a comfortable name, but I do, myself and our consultant feel that this, you know, this company is capable. I researched also some of the Better Business Reviews and, and all of the references that I could, you know, so.
What, what did DeClemente say about quality air systems?
He didn't have direct experience with the low-three to speak of. You know, when he's evaluating, he's checking, are there, is their bid accurate and complete with all the things we asked them for? We sent out a follow-up asking for equipment names, timelines, and references of three light jobs, and so when we met and evaluated all of that, he felt that there's really no reason to disqualify them as a low bidder, but, you know, he doesn't have personal experience with either Denny's or quality air.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just have a couple of comments. One, as for, do we have legal standing to not take the low bidder? We have talked to our attorney in the past about this, and that's where the eight determining factors that we can go put into effect, such as performance of previous contracts or services, which I think would fall into them doing the middle school and the other schools in the city. Character, their experience, again, the middle school and Radcliffe were built basically around the same time, I believe, and they're of similar nature, and talking with school staff, they had no issues, no problems, and they were really happy with, with the product they got. For the $200,000, we've gotten burned before, we've got a fire station we're dealing with in the past, we had issues with Mueller Park restrooms, going with the lowest bidder and going way back to 2014. The ICE arena, locker rooms that we went with the lowest bidder. We had nothing but issues with that. For 200,000, I think that's probably one or two change orders, and we're right back at the same price. My opinion is, I'd rather go with somebody that we know is familiar with, as in the school staff that has talked to some of our people. So that would be my opinion. Further comments from the table?
I just.
Councilmember Dole?
I just want to say, I've spoke with Superintendent Fisher in the past about different companies that they've used and projects that they've had. And their due diligence on these things is over the top. So when they recommend somebody, I highly listen to that.
Thank you.
Mayor, just add some insight to add to your decision-making. As you stated, our local ordinance provides eight separate factors which you can use to consider who you deem to be the lowest responsible bidder. Amount is one of those eight factors, but the ordinance specifically states you can consider all the rest equally. So council, within its own ordinance and its own decision-making, is not required to use just the lowest price. That said, when we talk about HUD and the lowest responsible bidder, you know, what will happen irregardless of council's decision tonight will be an examination to make sure that, you know, we're not in violation of that concept to hurt reimbursement. So I would recommend that if, you know, council needs to. I know it'd be nice to get it in before the Earth Day. But also, if this requires more research into that topic, then we'd be responsible and look into it and come back with an answer to that question. That is one, you know, under our ordinance, certainly it's within your purview to decide. I do become concerned if our statement is that the Parks and Rec director is concerned, we would definitely have to look in to make sure. Because the only impetus behind us doing this is it's funded by a $2.1 million HUD grant. And as we're dealing with some of the impacts of the lowest, just picking the lowest responsibility based on amount, I certainly understand council's concern about going with one just based on amount. So, given that one of the contractors has done buildings, done buildings within our community that are similar in design and makeup, can weigh heavily and certainly can be a factor council can use to choose them. But I don't want to say that, I guess my advice as city manager would be to consider both and both of those factors, evaluate them as the eight factors, but also don't limit to yourself to forcing that decision tonight then if we feel that that's not a piece of information. That the concern about violating the concept that HUD put forward as they define lowest bidder is addressed. I can reach out to the city attorney, or the Parks and Rec director can do the same if need be. I don't like that we would add an extra regulation. But this bid was presented and put forth tonight as quickly as it possibly could. We went out for bid on this project. We received the bids. Tonight's our first opportunity since we received those to put forth. And it's just, I hate making rushed decisions in order to save a little bit of money, and just as we're concerned about not going the lowest bidder, also to rush a decision where council feels they may need more information. Unlike the bathrooms where we have a really, really set deadline on on spending that CDVG money, this money has some more time to spend. So council can do, you know, I would add a third option to your decision-making tonight is ask for more information.
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Carefotos?
I don't know if the rest of the council's aware, but one of the other bids is the eight requirements for meeting the lowest responsible bidder. We all have that right here. And one of them is the character, integrity, reputation, and experience of the bidder. Well, Quality has seven buildings that they've done in our, in our city. That right there is the experience. Just in our city, they have more experience than Denny's doing that kind of work. It's also the quality of performance of previous contracts or services. Again, our school district leader, Derek Fisher, has said that he would have them do any work anywhere and would uphold a reference for them no matter what. So I think that just those two things alone is enough to think about not going by price alone. Sometimes it has to be more about quality than quantity.
Thank you. Further comments from table?
I have a question. What's the start date you're looking at for the HVAC?
It depends on the, they've got to place the order for all the pieces, so we don't have a start date yet.
I mean, rough July, August?
Yeah, I mean, well, once we award it, the next step is going through the bond and the contract. And then after that, a company would go ahead and start placing equipment orders. And something else, you know, when we have a consultant who's our subject matter expert, he is reviewing all of the orders, you know, before they're placed, just, you know, as information share. That's what we're paying for with him.
Councilmember King?
Mr. Smith, is it, so my next option, can I rescind the motions and?
Yes, what you could do, what you could do, if it suits you and the support, if you'd like to rescind that motion, and then either change it or recommend, you know, possibly tabling it, a decision to allow us to find out if HUD, you know, what their criteria is for that. We could always do that as well. But the first step would be, if you choose to, you can rescind the motion. If support agrees with that, then we can rescind that and then move forward with an alternate path.
Okay, yeah, I think more information makes sense, so I'd like to rescind my motion.
I'll support.
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos?
I'd like to make a motion to-
Hold on, we gotta, we have to vote on the rescinding, don't we? Or no?
So, well, because you're just basically pulling it off the table.
We just rescinded it, and we're good now, okay. Councilmember Carefotos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract with Quality Air Systems of Whitmore Lake, Michigan to complete the Radcliffe HVAC rehab project for 1,778,000 with an additional $100,000 approved as contingency dependent upon any criteria requirements that our city manager and Erica Smith lets us know.
Support. Or from Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Dole? Comments from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
Just so I understand the procedure, once Erica checks with HUD and gets the okay, then this contract automatically is in place? Based on that motion?
We vote on it.
Prove it, yes.
Okay.
Further comments from table?
Just a point, based on the motion, so you're making a motion to approve the contract with them, you know, she's going to find out, but the motion is still to approve. So if HUD comes back?
It's contingent, it would have to be contingent upon. I think contingent upon meeting HUD's qualification as the lowest responsible bidder, I think is the, but the motion has to be, and I'd, for parliamentary purposes, if the contingent resolution is acceptable as a motion, then.
So you can put that in there, so I just we have to have a plan for in case it's not, you know, doesn't meet HUD approval, we have to come back. Just another vote.
So just contingent upon HUD's approval of the lowest bidder?
So if HUD says no, then it fails, that motion?
Yes, it would have to, if they don't meet the qualifications. And I guess I would just add that it might be wise to add to that that we use the city attorney's opinion as the determinative factor. That the city attorney being, be the one who determines whether they do quali, you know, in our yeah, I would still relay it. I mean, if we get information from HUD that they do qualify, we'd still relay that through the city attorney because even a governmental agency gives you advice on something. It's not the same as having your own city attorney verify that they would meet that qualification.
Can I reread it then?
Go ahead.
Like to make a motion to approve a contract with Quality Air Systems of Whitmore Lake, Michigan to complete the Radcliffe HVAC rehab project for 1,778,000 with an additional 100,000 approved as contingency funds dependent upon requirements by HUD and the opinion of our city attorney.
Support them? Okay, further comments from table? From the public?
Start with, as far as the lowest responsible builder, that's up to y'all. HUD doesn't come and look at every contract that y'all do. I'm positive about that much. What's HUD got to do with who the lowest responsible bidder is? I understand what you're saying about it, but what I don't understand is HUD never, never steps foot in here and says, here's five contracts, this one for this, this one for that. All HUD ever does is, you know what they do, and I know what they do. I got a friend in Kentucky right now that's going to pay $2,400 for flood insurance. Been living there 20 years, never have been flooded, but guess who told him they had to have that insurance, they have to pay $2,400 for it every year? But y'all are the ones responsible for the lowest responsibility. I don't get it. Maybe I'm just too damn old, I don't know. But I don't get it. That's your job, that's not HUD's job. And I'm sure HUD doesn't do every contract, do they? You guys pick the winner and the loser. And you're right about one thing, you're picking too many losers. It's time for some winners. I understand it's my money a little extra, but I don't, I don't get it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Further comments from the public? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, item four is city treasurer appointment. Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As council's aware, we've had a vacancy in the treasurer position again for a few weeks. We had the good fortune of having some really good interviews. One in particular, we interviewed Shannon Shepherd. She was the deputy finance director of the City of Westland for a number of years, and then was, is recently the executive finance director comptroller of Dearborn Heights. She's interested in coming over and filling our treasurer position. And she comes highly recommended. She has good qualifications and experience. And financial professionals within the industry have all spoken highly of her, including those we deal with on a pretty regular basis at Plant Moran and others. So I'm confident in recommending the hiring and appointment of Shannon Shepherd as our next treasurer of the City of Garden City.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city manager's appointment of Shannon Shepherd as the city treasurer of Garden City.
Support.
So Councilmember Dole?
No. Carefotos.
Carefotos, okay. Losing my hearing, I think. Okay, further comments from the table?
Mayor, I just have one. I did a little bit of research on Ms. Shepherd, and she comes highly recommended from people that she's worked with in the past, so I feel real good about this, Tim.
Great recommendation she's got, so.
And she apparently lives around here somewhere, which is a boost.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about highway closures, so.
Thank you. Further comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, we have no other business. Item 13 is public comment on non-agenda items. You'll have three minutes to speak, and not a back and forth. We'll try to get answers if we don't have an answer for you right away. Anybody from the public wishing to speak?
This is just clarification, Mayor. Your newsletter said, excuse me, yard waste pickup starting April 1st. Was that a incorrect information?
Yes, it was.
Okay, because I don't have a computer. My deceased parents were victims of identity theft, a hack, and a scam. So I relied on this to put yard waste out that Friday. It took two weeks for them to pick it up.
Okay.
The yard waste that was supposed to pick up this past Friday, as of 5:00 today, still has not been picked up. In regards to bulk items, do you guys have a separate truck that comes around to pick up like refrigerators, stoves, or a door frame of some sort when people remodel the house? And if so, what do they do?
Okay, I'll answer it. Are you done with any other questions? So I can answer multiple?
No, that's the only two I brought up to your attention.
First is April 1st. That was our mistake, putting that out there. It should have been the first full week of April for yard waste pickup.
Okay.
If your yard waste is still out there, give Mr. Smith your address, and we will get it picked up. I would, I don't want to guarantee it tomorrow, but we will get it picked up.
I know you guys have problems, especially last year when you chanced over to-
We'll get it picked up if you give Mr. Smith your address. As far as bulk pickup, typically what they do is that priority will drive around. Their drivers will call in that there is bulk out there, and a separate truck will come and get it.
Okay. Why I ask you that, Mayor? My neighbor directly across the street from me put out bulk items Thursday, April 10th, for April 11th's pickup. As of today, it was still out there. And she ended up getting a citation, and I don't think that's fair.
Okay.
And she did contact the company for a truck to come and pick it up.
Okay, we will get your address, we'll know who the, your neighbor is, and we will look into that. And we'll get your yard waste picked up, and we will look into the citation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, it's free time.
Further comments from the public? Okay, city managers' report?
Nothing too much tonight, Mayor, just, you know, please continue to use GC Fix-It to let us know any trash issues, anything like that we can follow up on. You know, typically, a green, you know, if a citation is issued, most of the time, our first step is a green sticker. So if it's a green sticker and then it's remedied, you're going to be okay. But if it's an actual citation, especially for a garbage issue, and if you've had, we've had some issues with pickup, if it's an actual citation for sure, let us know if it was on the-
Do you receive a red sticker today?
Okay, the stickers are just, are like warnings. But, so if it's rectified, we'll probably be okay. But we'll follow up with the chief of police anyways and make sure. And on the other, Garden City, we lost a retired police sergeant recently. Fred Sager passed, and I had the pleasure of working with Fred for many, many years. He actually did my background into the police department. And I just want to offer my condolences to his family and just comment on what a wonderful person he was to work with, and, you know, sad to hear his passing.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just a reminder, shred day this Saturday at Radcliffe. At last check, the forecast went from a 65% chance of rain to a 35% chance of rain. So optimistic, but we'll be out there regardless.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dole?
Just like to echo what the mayor said about the garbage pickup, as well as the street sweeping. I've gotten numerous calls and emails on these issues. They are working, the city manager and the mayor are working hard at this. It just needs to be tweaked a little bit. It's like anything, when you get in there, you find out it's a little different than what you thought it was. And I'm sure they're going to get a handle on it soon. Just be patient, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Just one quick thing, I want to give a quick shout-out. I can't think of Paige's last name, but Paige, Officer Walls, and Minch were outside of my house this weekend apprehending a suspect. They did a wonderful, swift job doing so. I just want to thank, you know, them for quick response and handling the issues. But they did a wonderful job, and, you know, all of our officers are great and appreciate all the work that they do. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Dole?
I have a report that I'm going to read because my memory's about shot, but Stacy, Councilmember Carefotos, gave hers last week. We attended the National Main Street Convention, and I just wanted to share a few things. I was first given the opportunity to attend these conventions while I was with the DDA, first as their assistant, and then later on as the DDA director. I always found them to be geared more towards cities our size, other than the large cities, you know, Detroit, LA, along that line. They address a lot of the issues that we face as smaller towns. So I attended quite a few classes over the course, but I'm only going to speak about a few of them tonight. One I attended was sponsored by the AARP. And one of their goals includes making communities more livable for people of all ages. So they offer several grant opportunities to assist with things like public spaces, housing, pedestrian safety, disaster preparedness training. They do walk and bike audits and much more. There's different levels of the grants that they offer for that. They also currently have a pilot program called All Access Main Street. It's a voluntary program. At little or no cost, it makes changes and works to make businesses, organizations, and public spaces more- public spaces more accessible to all. The program improves revenues and membership numbers for participants. They offer several checklists for design promotion and organization that includes items such as proper lighting, wide aisles that are free of obstructions, staff on hand to great customers, et cetera. Most of it's plain old common sense, and any business agency or organization can accomplish them. Next, with an eye on working to increase Garden City's population, went to a class on that, and a few facts that were really interesting. The U.S. population is starting to stagnate, and the 2023 census is actually forecasting a downward trend for the United States in population. They said that in order for our population to grow, it's two things. In order to increase population, it has to, you have to have more births, and that's not happening. There's no state in the entire United States that is meeting the birth criteria to grow our population that way. And also immigration, and that's not necessarily foreign immigration from other companies or countries, but also immigration from other states where people are moving around within the United States. They also said by 2034, it's kind of interesting, there's going to be more people over 65 than under 18 for the first time in history in the United States. But I also learned that since the pandemic, more people are moving to the suburbs, and Michigan is still expected to experience some growth. So what that means for us, it, these numbers and predictions and stuff, they help us to understand how we need to plan for the future, what our housing needs are going to be, the sort of businesses we need to attract. Those businesses in turn will attract new customers. I personally believe we have a head start on this because our planning and zoning commissions have been in the process of reviewing and updating our zoning ordinances for months now, and the master plan updates will include ways to improve population density. And let's not forget a fundamental strength of any city. Garden City residents already have a great sense of pride and community. We were also treated to a learning lunch for civic leaders. The discussion included information on the Federal Reserve's program titled Reinventing Our Communities. Michigan is in the 7th District and is served by the Chicago Federal Reserve. They work with low to moderate income communities to promote economic growth and financial stability. They gave us tips on partnering, partnering with federal agencies for ways to strengthen our local economy. The last course I'm going to report on was about efforts to build a welcoming main street to create walkable spaces that encourage people to slow down and think, and explore. So think Northville, Plymouth, those towns like that, when you're walking through their downtown, I know I do anyways. It takes me a long time to walk down a street because I'm stopping and I'm looking in the storefronts, I'm seeing what they have to offer. So the planning code of ethics, there is such a thing, requires that planning commissions plan for the people, for the best interest of the residents in the city. When we build spaces without input from our residents, we often fail, and that's part of the reason why we hold public hearings, why the public is invited to master plan meetings, why you should be involved. We need to feel that something is happening for us, not to us, and that requires your involvement. So also, as councilmember Carefotos mentioned last week, this trip was in the works prior to discovering our latest financial issues, and all expenses were about $1,100 for myself. So if you have any questions about the trip, the courses, or anything, any of them that we took, feel free to show up at Radcliffe on May 1st from 7:00 to 9:00, and Stacy and I will be there, and we can talk about all of the courses or if you have specific questions. The only other thing I have is a reminder that the high school is doing Newsies on May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. You can get tickets at ludus.com, and our granddaughter has a leading role.
Awesome.
And again, Stacy and I will be at Radcliffe on May 1st from 7:00 to 9:00 if you want to come in and talk.
I'll see, I'll see your granddaughter at the play. Councilmember Carefotos?
I just have a couple of things. One thing about what Councilwoman Dole just said, yes, we both attended the same conference, but we attended separate seminars in that conference, so we both went to different classes while we were there to learn as much as we could to help our city. One thing that she mentioned about our housing in Garden City and increasing the population and increasing it for the people that live here, so our population is older adults, so when we talk about housing, we talk about housing that's going to fit our population. So hopefully our planning commission and our building department, everyone, are talking about things that fit people that are older, not three-story apartments or, you know, that kind of thing. We're looking for more things for seniors, so different townhouses for seniors or one, one-level ranches, that kind of stuff. Hopefully those changes are coming. Also, we had talked about those, our grants before, and both thought those were a good idea, so I hope that's something that our city manager will look into. It wasn't, wasn't looked into last time. And then the last thing that I wanted to say was about us voting for the retail marijuana. I just want to remind everybody that the council did that because we actually put that to a vote, and our citizens said the majority that they wanted that in our city. So you want us to listen to you, and we just did tonight, and that's it.
Thank you. I'll tie a couple of things in. As far as increasing population, one thing is more younger, or younger families with youth, which ties into playgrounds. And speaking of that, tomorrow at 4:00 PM at City Park, we will be doing a ribbon cutting for our new playground equipment. Hopefully people, people can show up. There will be a, I believe they're having some kind of contest because it is a fit core obstacle course, so there's different things that I know I can't do, and I'm sure the younger kids can, but there will be some contests and some games with that. And following right after that, there is an Earth Day cleanup at the park. I know our flyer says 4:00 PM, but that's when the ribbon cutting is, so shortly thereafter the, we'll be working on City Park cleanup. Anybody wanting to come by, see our, all of our equipment, come on by. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.